Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council? Saying no one, we will go ahead and move into our closed session items and I'll have our city attorney phrase those for us.
Thank you, Mayor McCacken. There are five agendized closed session items, four of which pertain to existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9A. The names of the parties and the case numbers are fully set forth on the agenda. The last item is a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pertaining to an update on the ongoing grand jury investigation. As you know, grand jury report came out and there was no report with respect to Victorville, so I don't believe it's necessary to go into closed session on that matter at this time.
All right, well now move into closed session. Good evening, I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We'll start off with our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Larry White from Horizon Church and our Pledge of Allegiance by Victorville Police Chief Don Yoder. If you all please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bible says, "Ask the Lord to bless your plans and you will be successful in carrying them out." And so that's what we do tonight. Lord, we come to you and we ask you to bless the plans that are laid out tonight. Lord, we know that if we ask you to bless them, that they will be successful according to your word. And so tonight I pray your peace and your grace and your perfect order into the atmosphere of this place. Lord, I acknowledge tonight your sovereignty over every word spoken, every thought that is brought to the table, and every decision made. And I pray, Lord, that you would bless the gifts that you have given these folks who lead this great community. Would you continue to stir up their gifts, I pray? And we thank you for that. We thank you for blessing this wonderful community that we live in. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I've just one presentation to make this evening. We have a proclamation for Community Services Department in the Park and Recreation Month. And I don't know, John, or who do you have representing your department? Cheryl? Okay. I'd like to present you with this proclamation recognition of the Park and Recreation Month and give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about what it's about.
Great, thank you. Recreation opportunities are a vital part of any community and it's no different with ours. We offer, besides youth and adult sports, we offer many programs for all ages, many affordable programs. We are currently offering seven new preschool programs, bring our total up to nineteen. There's such a demand for that. We have a very fully functioning VIP program, which is Families with Special Needs. It includes sports. It has family support groups. It has educational workshops for them. It has playgroups so that we can, you know, all get together. We invite you to take July and just check out your local recreation department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give her our applause. All right, we'll go into, do we have any reports out of closed session?
Mayor McCacken, we do not. We had five items on the agenda. We pulled one. We did not need to go into the anticipated litigation. The case numbers and the information related to them is on the agenda, but there is no reportable action.
All right, if I could ask the city clerk to present the agenda to the council and any revisions.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cellphones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the mayor. Individual comments to council members, staff, or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes what is not limited to addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium requested to do so, verbal outbursts, or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. City Council Agenda Item Number Seventeen, there is a revised memorandum of understanding that pertains to the Yuculoma Corridor Project. Those changes are outlined in the attachment and are provided to the council on the dais for consideration. And those are all the revisions I have.
Thank you. Well now going to public comment. The first card I have is from Nancy Casey.
Good evening, Mayor McCacken. I am Nancy Casey and I have been an inhabitant of Victorville since 1979, in the same home. It's been several months since I've addressed the council. There was a discussion at that time regarding having sufficient time to review items placed on the agenda. Mr. Kennedy commented during that discussion that four hours was sufficient for him to review nearly 1,200 pages of information supplied by the then-city manager, Mr. Cox. At the last council meeting, Mr. Kennedy voted in three instances to approving loans. After the third affirmative vote Mr. Kennedy cast, he asked the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Robertson, if the loans approved were loans already in force and simply being continued. Mr. Robertson responded that they were new loans. And I asked him this evening, when I got here early, and apparently you were both right, and they were loans, but then they're actually new loans. I respectfully suggest that Mr. Kennedy needs more time than he has been taking to review agenda items. I think that's very important. I was really flabbergasted when I heard a question about anything that you pass after it's been done. So I'm sure it was just clarification for you, but it doesn't send a good message to those of us here. Thank you.
You're keeping tally, aren't you?
Of course. That's my job. This is mainly probably the city manager would answer. I understand that there's going to be a lawsuit against the government by the City of Victorville. And my question is, how much is the city attorney charging to sue the government over the EB5 program? And how is the city going to pay for this with only $304,000? And how much will it cost us, the taxpayers of the City of Victorville? And is the city attorney taking this case on a contingency basis? And whose idea was it to bring forth this lawsuit? And I'm sure other people in the city are anxious to have some answers to this.
I will make sure that you get answers to all of those questions within the next couple of days.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Joe Brady?
Good evening, Mayor McCacken. My name is Joseph Brady. I'm the president of the Bradco Companies here in Victorville. I'm here tonight to talk about jobs in Southern California Aviation. My wife, Deborah K. Brady, and I are investors in Aviation Assurance Company, otherwise known as AAC, the founding parent of Southern California Aviation, SCA, Pacific Aviation Group, and the Commercial Aviation Services, CONAV, which all are local companies based on Southern California Logistics Airport. I have said it over and over again about the AAC companies, that they're the best story that nobody knows about. SCA currently has a customer relationship with over 100 owners, operators, lessors, lessees, and airlines from around the world. These customers have requested an expansion of the current SCA services from just an A&amp;D check to the heavy maintenance, namely C&amp;D checks. Our partner Pratt &amp; Whitney is not interested in expanding SCA services to include C&amp;D checks. CONAV's creation operations, stated mission, have no effect whatsoever on current SCA operations, employment, or customers. CONAV's presence will only enhance SCA's position by providing more than a one-stop-shop to its customers. SCA and CONAV are not competitors in any way, shape, or form. CONAV intends to leverage existing customer relationship by providing the services of customers that they are requesting. The risk of failure is very, very low. With this push into heavy maintenance, there's significant job growth due to the conversion of the 24/7 operation, as opposed to one eight-hour, five-day shift that's currently being operated by SCA. CONAV anticipates 300 jobs in the first year, and coupled with this hangar expansions at SCLA, it totaled 2,500 to 3,000 jobs. High-panned primary jobs within the first two years. Approximately 80 percent of these jobs are AMP mechanics and make between $55,000 and $60,000 per year in salary. This number does not take into account the secondary jobs that will be created by the salary influx into our local economy. The emphasis should be on job creation. Why should the city choose anything but that? CONAV is not a startup that we should be concerned about. It's an expansion of an already existing robust business at the airport. The City of Victorville, I know, always welcomes job growth and success stories. This is all about jobs, jobs, and jobs. And I wish to thank Mayor McCacken and Councilmember Angela Vias for taking the time to tour these facilities. The ongoing issues, and I'm sure Mr. Craig Garrett, Craig G. Garrett, Sr., and Mr. Craig C. Garrett will discuss and answer tonight, is my hope that the council members, Rothschild, Cabral, and Kennedy, will find the time to tour this facility and wait two weeks before making a very serious decision. I think you'd advance your consideration.
Thank you. Robin Hivitson?
That was just in the order, I got the cards.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People, California's Crusader. And I'm glad to, happy to announce that I fight illegal immigration every living day of my life. But EB5, Mayor, is a bad idea. It's a bad investment. And to city attorney, drop it. You know, bad money, you know, you're just throwing money away. You don't sell American citizenship to pay your debts. You know, you gotta have fiscal policy, Mayor and City Council. But I'm here to speak to you on two different issues. The first issue is what I'm in the process of doing. I've initiated an investigation into the city council and its activities. And I need information from the city council. By Thursday, she will have a letter stating what information that I seek from the city clerk from this body politic. And it has to do with the $80,000 that was donated to the High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I have been told that I need the minutes, I need, you know, all communications, any solicitation, any meeting, and people involved in voting for these donations to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. The investigation is going forward, and I will present that letter and I will get the answers. So you might as well tell your city attorney and your city manager to, you know, cop it up. The second item that I'm here to speak to you about, Mayor, City Council, is the request for donations for the GI Forum rendered or brought here by Felix Diaz. Mayor, we don't have money to donate to anyone, let alone the GI Forum. The GI Forum is like Maldiv, it is like the ACLU, and it is like MACA. They rail on behalf of illegal aliens. If you look at me, Mayor, you would know that I'm a baby boomer, Vietnam War veteran, Purple Heart too, Mayor. Here's my Purple Heart, the original Purple Heart awarded to me in Vietnam, Felix Diaz, Fabriales. I got a lot of friends on the wall. None of them are classified as Hispanic or Irish.
Direct your comments at me and thank you for serving our country. Direct your comments at me, but thank you for serving our country.
Mayor, you know, okay, Mayor, we'll take that issue up later. You're on my time. But I am a true American war veteran. So is my father, World War II Bronze Star, founding membership of the GI Forum. They represented the American people. They represented Americans like me, his son, of Mexican descent. It wasn't race-based. They didn't ask for donations from the city council or the body politic to go out and further the war with the people of Mexico, illegal aliens, directed at this event that you were asked to sponsor, Barstow. Sir, Mayor, we're in America, entertaining with Glenn Miller, Dorsey, entertaining with Beatle music. Do not sponsor the war with the people of Mexico illegally here in America. Do not give them the tax dollar to train dancers and musicians to go there and scare the living daylights out of American warriors from World War II that are having the shitties wobbed at them. Sponsor an American event if you must, when you can afford it, but you can't afford it this day. Mayor, I can address Fabriales. And that's another issue that I plan on taking up with you in the Brown Act. I can address and seek redress from any member of the body politic, whether you like it or not, Mayor.
Robin?
My name's Robin Hivitson, and I too am with We the People, California's Crusader. And I'm just following up on what Mr. Herrera touched upon, the request by Felix Diaz for this body politic to donate to his plan to do a mariachi celebration in Barstow at the Veterans Home. I did research into this organization, American GI Forum, and in my opinion, it's a very racist organization. They sponsor events with Mexico. Their upcoming New Mexico event, they invited Mexico to join them. And it's about Hispanic education, Hispanic culture. I think that they're a self-segregating organization. And for Felix Diaz and this body politic to spend money in the city of Barstow, I think that's misspending tax dollars. Now, he mentioned in his talk last week, Felix Diaz, that the city has donated in the past. And I sent a request to the city clerk to see what funds were expended in the past, and hopefully none have gone forward for this current event, because we're asking for the city council not to spend money on it. In addition, Felix Diaz asked at the meeting that you use your marquee to advertise the event. Well, I don't think the City of Victorville should be advertising an event in Barstow. If Mr. Diaz wants his event advertised at a city, it seems like he should go to Barstow and ask him to advertise it there. So in addition, when you research the organization, Felix Diaz is the commander of the San Bernardino County American GI Forum, which, when I looked at it, to me, it seems like a very racist organization. I only saw one ethnic group continually on his website. But one of the members is Mayor Rudy Cabralis. Now, if you're donating to an organization where Mayor Cabralis is a member, isn't that like the Hispanic Chamber Converse? Isn't that like a conflict of interest? So I'm just here tonight to say we would ask you not to donate to this organization and would like a full accounting of all money in the past that Mr. Diaz's reference has been spent on his organization. Thank you.
Okay. That is all the cards I have in response to your comments tonight. Go look at our budget. We didn't appropriate any money for that, and you know it. You were here at our last meeting. All right, moving on to our Library Board of Trustees, we have a consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Have the city clerk check with IT. I do not have a voting button.
Could a yes vote?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority under writ Communications Agenda Item Number 10. This is a request to approve a facility use agreement with Boeing Company for Building 685C for the A-160 Hummingbird Unmanned Helicopter.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 11 is a request to approve the sublease agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney Line Maintenance Services for Hangar 681. Mr. Metzler, did you wish to make any sort of presentation to the council, or are you good with what the staff report? All right. I do have two cards. I'll start with Craig Garrett, Jr.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, can I give my three minutes to Craig Garrett, Sr.? He has some prepared statements. It'll take about five.
I will allow that.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you? Tonight this council will vote on, and we were told by Mr. Metzler, will approve a new lease for Hangar 681 to a new Pratt &amp; Whitney special purpose entity called Pratt &amp; Whitney Line Maintenance Services, Inc., an entity different from the original lessee on the hangar five years ago. In doing so, this council will also be rejecting an alternative proposal for Commercial Aviation Services, LLC, a California limited liability company principally owned by Aviation Assurance Company, LLC. Ironically, Pratt &amp; Whitney and Aviation Assurance are partners in the real estate lease on this hangar, or the real estate lessee on this hangar, which is Southern California Aviation, which is a local company, that neither proposal can properly displace from the lease arrangement. And the disagreement between the partners, which is the actual driver for the two alternative leasing proposals, is about new local jobs. Aviation Assurance wants to complement the services and success of Southern California Aviation, a company it founded, and in which Pratt &amp; Whitney later became a partner, and create new substantial jobs now. Pratt &amp; Whitney wants to maintain the status quo of Southern California Aviation and is not interested in or committed to new job creation. And if the Pratt &amp; Whitney lease is approved tonight, no significant job creation will be created, at least either by Pratt &amp; Whitney or CONAV, over the last 18 months until CONAV can properly build new hangars. Mr. Metzler also tells me that I cannot change the council's vote tonight. I understand and respect Mr. Metzler's position, but I still think- Metzler's position, but I still think it important to share a few things briefly, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Win or lose tonight, the shareholders of Aviation Assurance and COMAV intend to continue to move forward with the COMAV project. The High Desert needs jobs desperately, and COMAV has the ability to bring a significant number of new jobs, estimated to be as high as 2,500 over the next 36 months. Further, it will do so while benefiting the success of Southern California Aviation, a sister company to COMAV. COMAV and the new jobs it represents is possible because of strong Southern California Aviation employees and successes, a strong customer base that reaches through all of the Aviation Assurance companies, and a strong and supportive group of government and civic leaders to whom we continue to be very appreciative. First, I sincerely appreciate the employees of Southern California Aviation. They have accomplished some remarkable things in the 12 years since Aviation Assurance first founded, founded the company in 1999. Among other things, Southern California Aviation employees have managed over 1,400 aircraft with value in excess of $16 billion on behalf of world leaders of aircraft owners, lessors, lesssees, including Boeing, General Electric, Federal Express, United, Delta, Cathay Pacific, Singapore, and the other 100-plus customers worldwide. Southern California Aviation has also done so, in fact, generally without the credit it and its employees deserve, including for such programs as the current Boeing 787 Test Program, which was contracted directly by SCA, the Boeing 747-800 Test Program, the Boeing Tanker Program, the FedEx Aircraft and Sparrows Program, United Engine Test Programs, the donated FedEx Aircraft to local A&amp;P School, was originated by SCA and closed by SCA, and many other programs and transactions rarely noticed, or if noticed, credited to some other person or entity that was not actually a significant part of the contract award. The Southern California Aviation employees are local residents dedicated to the company's success in setting some of the highest standards in the industry, including achieving the Diamond Award from the FAA for quality for five years in a row. These people make work expansion to its key customer base possible for COMAV. Second, I appreciate Mayor McCackran and Ms. Vias of this council for actually, who actually took the time separately, Mr. McCackran with Congressman McKeon several weeks ago, and Ms. Vias last Friday, to respond to an invitation extended to all of the council members of this council, to visit Aviation Assurance and its companies at SCLA, tour the several facilities, understand the actual history of these companies, and understand the complementing and enhancing role of COMAV. I appreciate this time and interest very much. Third, I appreciate the other community leaders, federal, state, county, and city, who have actually taken the time to make the same visit, learn the same facts, and lend their support. These include, but are not limited to Congressman McKeon and his staff members, Alton Garrett Jr. from Senator Boxer's office, Jason Rancador and David Knudsen from the California Governor's Office of Economic Development, Supervisor Brad Metzl felt, First District Supervisor County of San Bernardino, Mary Jane Alaso, EDA Administrator from San Bernardino County, Sandy Harmson, Director of San Bernardino Worker Investment Board, Nick Demart, Deputy Director, San Bernardino Workers Investment Board. I'm also grateful for the other community leaders who have not yet had a chance to visit, that have spent the time required to understand Aviation Assurance Companies and COMAV and affirm their support, including Wilford Marshall, Federal Economic Development Authority, Brian McGowan, Deputy Assistant United States Secretary of Commerce for Economic Development, Senator Feinstein's office, Congressman Lewis's office, Governor Brown's office, Robert Byer, Director of the California Employment Training Panel, and Greg Deveraux, CEO of the San Bernardino County. I had hoped that we'd be creating substantial new jobs starting in October this year. I certainly have a host of resumes from local residents who would like an employment opportunity, but I understand this is not expected to happen because of the council's decision tonight. If that is true, I'm hopeful that if nothing else, as council members will become better informed with regard to COMAV in the future, recognize the jobs lost tonight, provide better and more timely support in the future. Thank you.
That was all the cards I have on this item. Are there comments from the council?
Yeah, I'll start. First of all, we have a company, Pratt &amp; Whitney, it is a multi-billion dollar company, which owns 51% of the company that he's president of. That company is substantial and real because of Pratt &amp; Whitney being there and the backing that they have. This paper company off to the side that's supposedly going to gather in the jobs and the things can all be done under the same agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney. It can be done. They choose not to do that, for whatever reason, that's their call. But I'm far more comfortable with the assets that Pratt &amp; Whitney has, the five-year agreement that they've just finished, and the five-year agreement that I hope we will continue with. And if he wants to bring in this heavy lift concept, which was discussed by Jim Worsham and others well before that, and I was familiar with those efforts when Jim was still here, then that's fine, all the better. I believe that the concept that they're dealing with here is a good concept. It can be done under the current structure. For us to break that agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney would be foolish on our part, to say the least. You criticize us for lawsuits. I venture to say that'd be a simple and easy lawsuit that we would clearly lose if we denied Pratt &amp; Whitney's continuation without just cause, and there is no just cause here. Second of all, I heard you say that we were invited to that meeting there that I specifically asked to come to, the one that Congressman McKeon was at, was told that I could not come more than once, and it was a private meeting, yet the next day, of course, it was all on the front page. Great photo op for Congressman Mayor McCackran and others. I didn't want to be there for the photo op, I wanted to be there because I want to see what was different and new that I hadn't heard before. Probably, I, more than any other council member on this council, know the history and the background about what's been going on at SCLA. I'm practically short of Terry Caldwell's efforts out there, I've been mostly embedded in all the programs out there, including the AP program, which Jim Worsham started. We're benefiting from a lot of that work today. Mr. Garrick's company is benefiting from that work today. And I hope he continues to do that, but as we're looking here tonight, there's only one issue for us, how to use that hangar safely, effectively, and with a program for the next five years that is in place and will not go away. And continuing that contract with Pratt &amp; Whitney is the way the city council ought to go with that. We have the assets, they have the resources, and they do exactly what he wants to do under that umbrella. Unfortunately, it would be called Pratt &amp; Whitney and Company versus Mr. Garrick's company. So, I'm comfortable with the agreement we have to continue that five years for another, continue that under Pratt &amp; Whitney and let them do the program out there. But I have no intentions of moving any kind of risk factor into this business deal with a company that has very little in the way of real assets, short of the backing and cover that Pratt &amp; Whitney gives them. So, I'm good to go with Pratt &amp; Whitney for another five years.
I'm enthusiastic about the job growth that Mr. Garrick's company wants to bring to the valley. I'm completely in favor of it, and I wish you well. And I believe as part of this agreement, this lease agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney, the door is open and your companies are pre-approved for a sublease arrangement. In terms of the financial security that I think we need to consider on these leases, I think Pratt &amp; Whitney is the best choice. It's the best choice for the city, and it's the best choice for the base. I must also say I elected not to visit the facility. In time, I hope to see every piece of square inch of the base, haven't been able to do that. But I believe these lease negotiations should be conducted by Mr. Metzler and his department. And one of the things that's bothered me about this particular lease negotiation, and it's the first that's occurred since I've been on the council, it's when the negotiation wasn't working in its normal context through the normal leasing process, Mr. Garrick has chosen to take it into a political forum and apply, what, political pressure to council people? I believe staff has brought us the best lease, the most reasonable, sensible lease for us to enter into, and it's the one I'm going to support.
Yeah, I had a conversation today with Craig, I believe he called my house, and wanted to provide more information on their project and their proposal. And I did need that information, and I appreciate the discussion. But during the discussions, something was set to really disturb me, I mean, extremely. Mr. Garrick indicated that there were some unfavorable comments made about his company. And of course, I, you know, I wanted to know what the comments were and where they came from. And he indicated to me that they came from a closed session that we had, that the council had, and the one that I wasn't privy to, was that's in that council meeting. So, that, when he said that, that really concerned me. You know, like, these leases, these negotiations are done in closed session for, because there's much information that is necessary to be discussed in closed session, and when everything is negotiated, then it becomes public. But that comment really disturbed me quite a bit, that someone from that closed session would divulge information to this company. So, I support staff recommendation, and I'm going to vote appropriately.
Before I have Councilwoman Vias' comment, I'd just like to let everybody know in full disclosure that a week ago last, or two weeks ago, Friday, I requested that Mr. Metzler arrange a meeting with Pratt &amp; Whitney, as well as Mr. Garrick. So, it was Larry Jones from Pratt &amp; Whitney, Mr. Garrick from COMAV, myself and Mr. Metzler, we met here at City Hall in order to try to work out a deal. I thought we had gotten to that point, but there were obviously, there were some things that COMAV was not comfortable with, and I understand those issues. But I think what I was attempting to do, understanding the nature of the situation and what came out of our last closed session meeting, was to try to bring the parties together and work out some sort of deal. And unfortunately, it didn't work out. I do believe that there's still the opportunity to work out that deal. Unfortunately, based upon my conversation with Mr. Garrick, I know it'll take more time. But, you know, what I was attempting to do was try to bring the parties together. And it was my hope that we could do that, and apparently that did not occur. And it's a little bit frustrating to me tonight that we have to be in this situation. I think it's a terrible thing that we have a split council, and this has become somewhat a political issue. I mean, who doesn't want jobs up here? I don't think, if I polled the council, that any one of you would vote against creating jobs, and I hope you would not, because I certainly do not support that. But I also understand the nuances of a lease agreement and the business decision, and so it just puts us in a difficult situation up here. But I at least wanted to let the council know that I did attempt to work out a deal between the two parties.
I have some questions, Doug. Who would you like me to direct them to?
In this case, it would be directed to Mr. Metzler, I'd ask if he'd come up. I do want to mention something on his way, though, that although this is a very somber discussion, it's important to keep in mind that we have two companies trying to lease the same hangar. It's a good problem to have, and it is a tough decision for the council. And I know that Keith has committed as MRI that no matter which way the council goes, we'll continue to work on bringing, you know, the other company to SCLA, depending on what the council decides.
What businesses does Pratt &amp; Whitney have at SCLA, independent from the companies that are founded by AVCO?
By COMAV, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, I can speak to Pratt &amp; Whitney. Pratt &amp; Whitney is a partner in a company called SCA, Southern California Aviation. They also manage an engine pool, they have a pool of engines that they actually warehouse and maintain across the street from the airport office, and they actually use the hangar, incidentally, for both the SCA operation, they'll also use it for their engine pool program. It's admitted that Pratt &amp; Whitney doesn't use the hangar 100% of the time, but they have committed to paying 100% of the lease. It's actually a nice problem to have, because having a tenant like that that doesn't consume 100% of the time has certainly enabled us to take advantage of opportunities such as the Boeing Flight Test Program. In fact, when Boeing 787 Flight Test, any of the three test beds that they have is here for certification processing, they do it in this hangar, and they would not be able to do so if you did not have the cooperation of Pratt and SCA. But those are the primary...
How many employees does Pratt have at SCLA?
I don't know the exact number. Pratt's employment count is largely through the SCA operation, and I can tell you opportunistically in connecting Boeing to their willingness to do a sublease-type arrangement, Boeing, we've badged as many as 600 Boeing employees at SCLA.
My understanding was that Pratt &amp; Whitney has one employee at SCA in the accounting department, is that correct?
I can't verify that, it could be true, but I cannot verify that.
Has COMAV ever refused to provide financial information or statements for Hangar 681?
They've never provided it to me.
Have they refused?
I don't know that they've specifically refused, but they've never provided it upon request.
Have you asked?
I have asked.
Yes?
Yes.
There's been some suggestion, when you say that they're high-risk, that you say that they have bad credit, bankruptcies, lawsuits, things like that. Is that the case? Is that why you feel that they're high-risk?
Councilwoman Vias, there's a lot of consideration that goes into these lease-type transactions. I'll admit to you, I realize that politically, the recommendation that I have before all of you is probably not a popular one, because it's not the one that creates the most jobs. And contrary to my role in serving you as a Director of Economic Development, it's actually kind of contrary from what my job is. But when you asked me, or when this council asked me two years ago to take over the airport and run that airport and conduct it in a way that it's run like a business, much different than we've run it before, you know, that takes a very different approach, a very different methodology. One of the biggest challenges we had out at SCLA was having good leases. We've actually restructured our leases, and this transaction before you tonight is a much different lease with better security for the airport. It also gives you a stronger credit backing with a company like Pratt &amp; Whitney. We feel with high degree of confidence that they will fulfill the lease payments, all $3 million or $2.9 million of it. When we look at a company like that and compare it to any other company, whether it's COMAV or any other project, we look not only at what we can find in terms of credit information, we also look at the business plan, if there is one, we also look at verifying and validating whether or not they actually have the contracts to fulfill what it is they're actually proposing. So, it goes beyond just the simple trying to determine credit, it goes into verifying and conducting the due diligence as to whether or not they're going to be able to perform, determining through financials, if they provide financials, whether or not there's enough working capital to actually pay the lease. You know, these are very serious things that we have to now look at as an airport, because one of your biggest revenue sources at SCLA is lease revenues. And the biggest revenue source in that category of lease revenues comes from your hangars. And if one of your hangars goes dark, that's a substantial hit to your daily operations. It's so substantial that you would be forced to make decisions as to whether or not you keep that facility safe and secure, whether or not you lay off employees. So, there's a lot of factors that go into determining who we lease facilities to. And in this case, we have a track record with Pratt &amp; Whitney as to them paying their lease, their current, it's a significant amount of money that they pay, and through the comparison and the due diligence that we've conducted on both parties, we believe Pratt &amp; Whitney is the right financial business decision for SCLA.
Is that a yes or a no?
What is your question?
Do they have bad credit and pending lawsuits?
I will not answer that question in public.
Okay. So, they want to provide 2,500 jobs, that's their business plan, and Pratt &amp; Whitney doesn't want to provide any. Is that your understanding?
That's what's been proposed to you. That is correct.
And you want to give it to Pratt &amp; Whitney because...
I'm confident they are secure in being able to pay the rent over the life of the lease.
Even though they're negotiating to sell their share with Comm Ave?
I can't confirm that.
So they're going to leave anyways?
I can't confirm that. I don't know that.
What are the consequences of awarding Hangar 681 to Pratt &amp; Whitney?
What are the consequences?
Yeah, to Comm Ave.
I don't know of any consequences immediately to Comm Ave. In fact, we've worked cooperatively with Comm Ave. We've actually sat down with them, attempted to coordinate schedules so that we can know when the expected arrivals of their aircraft are. Again, one of the nice things about having Pratt as a lessee on the facility is they have a lot of vacant time. So we'd actually worked out an arrangement, even struck a business deal, where Comm Ave can put the hangar to use in their startup mode. And that's one of the interesting things about the Comm Ave proposal. It's a great concept and it's a great proposal. It starts up and grows into something potentially bigger if they can be successful in early years. And one of the things for us as the airport in measuring the risk is we can have the backing, a corporate backing of a Pratt &amp; Whitney, but because they're not using the hangar, they can actually sublet it to a Comm Ave if we can coordinate calendars. So actually, it's kind of, from my perspective, it's a win-win, at least from the airport's perspective, because you get the, you get the backing of a Pratt &amp; Whitney, but you also have the opportunity and the willingness and the cooperation of a Pratt &amp; Whitney to actually sublease to a user like Comm Ave or FedEx or even Boeing.
Provided they stay. My understanding is that Pratt &amp; Whitney wouldn't even exist if it wasn't for Comm Ave and all the other companies that Comm Ave has developed. So, yeah, they backed them, they got them started, but they're not willing to finish the job. They just want to back out. They're not willing to provide 2,500 jobs, and that's what I thought SCLA was all about. And when Rothschild mentions Worsom, who had a $2 million payout from the city with a no clause, a no performance clause in his contract, and he mentions Caldwell's name, then it makes me very suspicious of why we're going with Pratt &amp; Whitney when they're not going to provide what we essentially is the vision of SCLA.
SCLA's vision is to create jobs. You're absolutely correct about that. However, you're also responsible for running that operation like a business and making financial decisions that help prop that operation up financially without having it rely on the city. I'm actually very proud of having been involved in the airport, because in the last, this last fiscal year and even in this upcoming fiscal year, we're actually budgeting operations to be cash positive, which is to mean they're actually generating a positive net income. In the private sector, that would be called profit. We have to reinvest that for capital purposes. But my point is, up until the transition in management, operations of the airport have been funded in large part by the city, and we're not doing that now. And we're not doing that because we've managed our costs, we've restructured our leases, we've focused on collections, we've focused on running the business like a business. Now, if we start taking risky decisions and start opening ourselves up to leasing facilities based upon what is the most politically correct or what is the most politically promising in terms of job creation, you know, I will tell you, it's not my job to recommend to you job creation tenants that might not be able to pay the rent over a period of time. That is concerning. If, if, if we're running this airport and we're in the real estate business, we have to be concerned first about the payment of rents.
What I'm concerned about is that you refuse to answer a question that you base your decision off of to not give the lease to Comm Ave, which is that they're high risk. Bankruptcies are public information. So why wouldn't you answer that question?
Out of professional courtesy to the principles of Comm Ave, I will not share that with you. There is public information, and you're right, you could obtain it yourself. I did share it with you in closed session. I'm not going to breach the confidentiality of closed session. There are public records, there is due diligence that we conducted, and the due diligence that we conducted did raise question about the ability to perform.
Okay. So has there ever been any other companies that you've had at SCLA that have had bankruptcies, maybe numerous bankruptcies, such as four?
Such as who?
Four companies that have had numerous bankruptcies, four bankruptcies, one company.
Can't think of any.
My concern is that we are treating people fairly, treating companies fairly, and if we're charging one 10% more for a lease and not another, and using it for the same reason of credit, bankruptcies, lawsuits, large companies, you know, anytime you make money, you're going to get lawsuits. That's all the questions I have.
Keith, I just have a couple of questions. Do you know how long Comm Ave has been in existence?
Legally, as a form company, I don't know how long it's been in existence.
Do they have any operations, do you know?
As much as I know about Comm Ave is what's been represented to me by the principles of Comm Ave, that it's in a startup format, they're in a position of bidding on an RFP for a FedEx maintenance program, but in terms, in terms of Comm Ave as a legal entity actually conducting maintenance-related activities that they're proposing they would do for FedEx, to my knowledge, they're not being conducted at SCLA.
Do you know how many jobs Comm Ave has created at this moment in time?
I do not know.
Do you know what the projection of job creation is based on?
As much as I know, is that their projection of job creation is based upon their ability to be awarded an RFP that they're actually presenting likely tomorrow in Memphis, and it's based upon a small group of aircraft that they would get in an early phase, and then the projections of 2,500 are jobs that would actually be created over three years, I believe, and be heavily dependent upon an ability to build hangar facilities, new hangar facilities, to accommodate that growth. So everything that they've been proposing has been in a proposal format. It's been all projections looking forward as to what they would like to do. And that's exactly, I think, one of the reasons why we're taking the approach that we're taking, is because they're in the proposal stages with FedEx. That's part of the risk element that's becoming difficult for us to say, let's pull the dice out and roll them on the table. But having the cooperation from Pratt &amp; Whitney is why I say I think we have the best of both worlds, because we get a corporate backing of Pratt &amp; Whitney. Ironically, Pratt &amp; Whitney is their partner in other ventures, and Pratt &amp; Whitney is even willing to sublease out the facility. They've, they've represented that verbally to us, they've actually agreed to allowing us to write that into the contract. So I don't think there's anything that actually causes us severe harm. It actually allows us to explore the Comm Ave project in the early stages, and in fact, I know the Comm Ave team to be working with our group of civil engineers out at the airport to actually be conducting due diligence on site to determine utilities and appropriate buildings they can actually develop out in the northern part of SCLA.
Do you think there's any possibility that their ability to, to win those contracts might be improved by a sublease arrangement with Pratt &amp; Whitney, with Pratt &amp; Whitney behind them on the, on the hangar?
Can you restate that again?
Do you think their connection with Pratt &amp; Whitney, if they sublease, which this contract permits, might assist them in any way in winning those contracts?
I would certainly hope so, because still, the project they propose is a project that is consistent with our larger goal for job creation, but I can't, I can't guarantee that.
I have a couple more questions. It disturbs me that you don't know how many employees that this company has. From my understanding, it's 250 employees, and Kennedy asks how many companies or operations they have. They have three. And to lease financing, they sell parts, and they do light maintenance. The reason why they need this hangar is so that they can do more thorough maintenance, and that is, that is like millions and millions of dollars that they bring into this economy by doing heavy maintenance. Not only do they feed the economy by employing 2,500 people, but all the, all the parts and everything that they do is just like a rippling effect throughout this economy in this, in this desert. And Pratt &amp; Whitney, yeah, maybe they gave them the money to get started, but they're, they're doing a great job, and they're expanding like crazy, and I think that the city of Victorville needs to be right there to help them all the way to go. I mean, this is what it's about. What's our unemployment rate right now? What, 19%? It, it just makes sense. A lease over 19% employment and giving 2,500 jobs? Something's not right here. It just makes sense to give it to a company that has already proven themselves.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, the same jobs that Councilwoman Vias is pointing to, the 250 and all of the maintenance-related work that's being done, Pratt &amp; Whitney can actually take credit to that as well, because they are a 51% owner in the company that's responsible for that, which is SCA.
They just put their name on the building, that's all they did, and give them money.
All right. I think we've discussed this one at length. I'd like to bring it back to the council for a decision at this time.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis and second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 12 is request to approve addendum number one to promissory note dated May 10, 2010, in the amount of $1 million, the EB5 program, C Chen and T Chen.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 is request to approve addendum number two to the promissory note dated September 2, 2010, in the amount of $500,000. Again, the EB5 program, H Chen.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
There are no items under the redevelopment agency, there are no items under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, so we'll move on to the Victorville Water District. Continue public hearing. Call to hear arguments for and against connection fees and to adopt resolution number VWD-11-013 entitled, "A Resolution of the Victorville Water District Fixing Charges for Water Service Connections and Other Related Fees and Charges."
I would recommend that Councilwoman Vias leave the dais. This may have some indication, some potential appearance of a conflict or bias.
All right. We'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 14. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for a decision.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern voting no and Councilmember Vias absent.
Under agenda item number 15, written communications, this is a request to increase the Sage Designs Purchase Order Number 5007 for the Mesh Network Radio System for Water District telemetry system in the amount not to exceed $65,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Cabralis, may I give a vote for you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 16 is the City Council Consent Calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If I have a question about a particular staff report, community service department, do I need to pull it from the agenda to ask the question?
That would be appropriate, yes.
I'd like to pull item D1.
We have the balance of the consent calendar before us.
I'd like to point out, there are a couple of items that reference the word sewer. I think it's 16G, E, and there's a notice of completion on 16H. We have looked at those at the request of Councilwoman Vias. We do not believe, just because they reference those words, is any conflict of interest with respect to those items.
That it is a conflict?
It is not a conflict.
So I can vote?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd just like to make one comment, that in this commercial demand schedule, we paid the city attorney $167,000, and we only have $300,000 in reserves.
The motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
I will now handle, under consent calendar, agenda item 16D1, Councilmember Kennedy.
John had a question for you. On your activity report, and I don't have the page in front of me, I looked at it yesterday, the incidence of vandalism in the parks was substantially down from last year. Gosh, can you explain that?
No. Usually, when times are tough and more, and that's when they go up, the vandalism goes up. But, yeah, I had noticed the same thing, but it's going back and looking at the pattern, it's been that way. I mean, for the month, it was down, what, 60, over 65%, and for the year, like you said, it's down over 50%.
We don't have increased security in the parks?
And graffiti acts are the same way. Graffiti acts are down. So...
Is it security? Police doing a wonderful job?
Yes, they are doing that. Also, we put in the cameras, the police did through that grant that they had, I believe, with Target, the city cameras, so there's a few other cameras at parks. I believe we installed at three or four different parks, some cameras.
There's...
Brentwood, Sunset Ridge.
Both of them, yeah. So how many, how many cameras do we install in that Safety City, or Safe City?
Yeah, quite a few. So that could be a part of it. But it's been, it's been pleasant not to have all the graffiti cleanup that we've had in the past and vandalism being way down.
Whatever we're doing, keep it up. I just, I did want to make sure everybody noticed that piece of your report.
Yeah, even our repairs for service is down, so the users there are not breaking the things that they...
Let's thank parents, if they're out there helping with that, too.
All right. I'll need a motion on this item since we pulled it.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 17 is request to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Funding of the La Masonas Quali Interchange in the Yakaloma Corridor. We have any staff report on this, or Robertson?
This is as a result of direction from the council from, I don't honestly know how long ago, to work out a cooperative agreement between ourselves and mainly Apple Valley, although the county has a small piece of this as well as Sandbag. And in essence, what this does is it puts to paper promises that were made to Victorville and to Apple Valley, that as Victorville pays for 100% of the La Masonas Quali interchange, which is different than the NEXA study, part of Measure I, called for, that the monies that we put in that would normally have been Apple Valley's share and the county's share would go to other parts of that Yakaloma-Green Tree corridor when those are built. This effectively is, is our deal that says that we all agree to do that and that we are all protected in, in doing so. So that it's fair all the way around.
When the div fees are...
Excuse me?
When the div fees are...
Right, right.
All right. This item is before the council.
Yeah, I have got a question here. There is quite a bit of detail here. I just got this tonight, and I'm sure it's annotated properly. It wouldn't take me too long to get through, unfortunately. It wouldn't take me too long to get through, unfortunately, I did get it about two hours ago. I'm concerned about the details. Does this discuss who's paying for some of the infrastructure between connecting the Yucaloma Bridge project and getting over the river to Hesperia Road? Is there any of that language in here? If there is, I'd like to delay it at least for two weeks and let me have a chance to review it.
It, it's not specific as to each segment. It, it talks about the corridor as a whole, which I know you disagree with.
No, I disagree with actually the concept of even in the title here tonight. You've got from this group here, now they're calling it Yucaloma Corridor. That's the first time I've ever heard of a Yucaloma Corridor. What was, what was teed up from Mr. Metzenfeld's office a couple of years, a few years ago, was Yucaloma-Green Tree. And the issues I had with that were several. One was, nobody's discussing the idea that we don't have to build, Victorville shouldn't be paying for a bridge over the railroad tracks. That's a ten-million-dollar item. The improvements up Hesperia Road to Nesqually are important, but there is very little assignment of that responsibility to anybody but Victorville. The traffic study is a joke. It alludes to the fact that those four or five or six hundred homes up on the ridge are looking over the Kemper Campbell Ranch. Those folks are all going to be shopping in Old Town, which is ridiculous. They're going to go over the bridge into Apple Valley and shop at a very fine shopping center on Apple Valley Road. To me, that's probably about a million dollars of sales tax revenue in perpetuity going to Apple Valley. God bless Apple Valley, but I don't think Victorville ought to be paying for that, those impacts to the city. And yet this MOU here refers to Yucaloma Corridor. And now we're inventing a brand-new name here for a very good reason. You don't want to mention that twenty thousand cars a day might be dumped onto the end of Green Tree Boulevard. And we hope they get to Nesqually, but the fact is that that responsibility hasn't been addressed yet. Now, is that responsibility addressed in this document? If it is, I, my first perusal's true, I haven't seen it yet.
No, Councilman Rothschild, it is not, actually. It's referred to on the whole. I don't know the purpose for dropping Green Tree from the Yucaloma Corridor. Perhaps it's in response to your request to, to look at other alignments, I don't know. I suspect it's because this document originated in Apple Valley and their piece is Yucaloma, and that's how they refer to it. That's my best guess as to why it would be referred to that way. At some point, we, the corridor has been referred to as the Yucaloma-Green Tree-Nesqually Road-La Mesa, something or other corridor, and it took up two lines to type the darn thing. I, I don't know that that is a material effect. I do know that, that you and the rest of the council that was sitting on the council at the time were promised that the engineering staff, when the time was right, would take a look at exactly how the Victorville piece would tie into Nesqually Road with an effort to make sure that we could direct traffic as much as is possible down Hesperia Road, excuse me, I said Nesqually. And that is still our intent, when that time is right. This is preserving the actual funding that will make sure that when Victorville pays for the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange, the monies that should have come from Apple Valley in order to build that interchange and are not, are actually repaid to Victorville as part of the project further east. That's the intent. The changes that are on the dais are, for the most part, non-substantive. For the most part, they involve taking language that we agreed to with Apple Valley about a week and a half ago and applying those also to the county. That's why they look so, so voluminous in nature. However, they're actually the same changes that were made for the Apple Valley piece, and it's effectively providing Victorville the assurance at this point. I think this document was born as providing Apple Valley assurance that in fact Victorville would pay for La Mesa-Nesqually. With the transfer of La Mesa-Nesqually interchange to Sandbag, that's a guarantee now, and so therefore this is effectively a guarantee to Victorville that in fact we will get a return on that investment later on in the corridor project. The actual payment for that, for the bridge that you're talking about, Councilman Rothschild, is, is something that I think will be discussed in the future. It will be an uphill battle because the NEXA study that's referred to in this agreement that was passed as an attachment to Measure I actually already prespecifies that it's Victorville's. I actually agree with you and don't think that that's very fair. And I think that both Apple Valley and the county are open to discussing the remainder portion to pay for that bridge when that time is, comes up.
When we were looking at the map this afternoon, and I was trying to get a clear picture of how that, that whole, let's go ahead and call it a corridor, because it's easier than putting all those names on it.
Yucaloma-Nesqually Corridor.
I like that.
You got me on board.
Yucaloma-Nesqually Corridor.
Change it.
When it, Apple Valley's going to build the piece, the bridge that comes across the river, then curves around the north, the north end of Spring Valley Lake, we're going to have to expand that road, comes to Ridgecrest, then there's another bridge across the railroad tracks from Ridgecrest to what is now the Dirt Road Extension, which it has some other name, but it was actually one time called Yates Road, if you follow the map. Yates Road would be the line that goes into the, into this corridor. But when it comes back around, we don't have to continue that road to Green Tree. That could curve down and tie into Ottawa. I suppose we could bring it all the way down to Nesqually.
Those are two options that will be studied at the time. When this issue came before the council, when the promise was made to Mr. Rothschild and to the rest of the council, the, the project.
Excuse me, and that means without ever getting on to Hesperia Road? Yeah, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the project had been developed based on historic general plan of the city, historic traffic plans for the city. And Apple Valley took those plans and used that in order to start the preliminary environmental work. They had a, a federal award of a million dollars to do that environmental work, and the decision made by the council that night was to continue based on that, that alignment in order to preserve that million-dollar grant. But there was an acknowledgement that in fact if Victorville, once it got to Victorville's side, which is effectively Ridgecrest, we can choose, this council can choose upon, you know, study by the engineering staff, to take another route. We did not want to jeopardize the project in any way for Apple Valley, and so the council decided to move it forward based on, on, on what was the, the current plan, with an understanding that once it gets to Victorville, certainly, you know, we will study perhaps a, a better way of getting it to either Hesperia Road or Nesqually. Those alignments will not be without challenges, but it's something that we are definitely committed to looking at.
Run my vote on, on this, this one time on it.
All right, well, it's before the council.
Well, I have a comment. Again, I just find it amazing that I find this eight-page contract on the dais for tonight's meeting, so, and we're all going to vote on it.
Was this not included in our agenda package?
Sure was.
I thought.
This is substantial revisions here.
Substantial revisions?
It's been revised.
Substantial revisions, that's not what your comments were.
Page after page, line after line.
Yeah, but if you read, if you actually.
The same thing you look at in our agenda.
Center line, it's the same stuff.
The revisions are non-substantive.
Thank you. It's before the council for a vote.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Eighteen is request to, one, enter into a lien agreement with P.S. Vista Del Cerro LLC, Cheyenne Capital LLC, Tycoon Traders, and Assad Shirazi Trust as security for the improvements required by Section seventeen-point-six-four-point-zero-six-zero subsection D-two of the Victorville Municipal Code for Track one-six-five-zero-seven, and two, release the existing bonds for Track one-six-five-zero-seven upon recordation of the lien agreement, Victorville one-nineteen LP.
Mayor McEckern, for the record, there are references in the agreement to sewer improvements. However, we have reviewed this item and do not believe that Councilwoman Vias has any conflict of interest. This is just exchanging existing bonds for a lien agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Nineteen is request to approve the contract for Victorville City Manager Douglas B. Robertson.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Twenty is request to, one, approve an amendment to the bylaws of the Regional Center of Victorville Development, the RCVD, Inc., and two, appoint two RCVD board members to fill existing vacancies. Mr. Metzler, did you want to comment on this, or Mr. Robertson?
I can address the issue of the amendment of the bylaws essentially with the current state of affairs in Sacramento and the potential elimination of redevelopment agencies. We have a vehicle here in the RCVD that initially was formed to help facilitate the EB five program, but it could still exist regardless of whether the EB five program manages to survive the legal challenges. But the RCVD as a body could undertake other economic development-type activities in lieu of a redevelopment agency should those be abolished. Hence, we have proposed an amendment to give the city of Victorville essentially some other alternatives in terms of pursuing economic development opportunities. In addition to that, the current board of directors comprised of Reggie Lamson, Doug Robertson, and Sean McGlade, as Doug Robertson is now the city manager, we are concerned that there could be a potential conflict of interest and have recommended that he resign from that post. And accordingly, with Mr. Lamson's prior departure, we have two vacancies to fill on the RCVD board in order for business.
Are we going to do these in two motions?
That, if that's the pleasure of the council, certainly.
I think we should do the amendment first.
That's fine, I'll take the amendment first.
By Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Can I make a nomination? Like to nominate Jim Cox to serve on that position vacated by Doug Robertson.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
If it's the council's pleasure, we've been functioning as a board with just two members, sort of waiting to see what happens with the EB five program, and the board could function with just two members if that's the decision of the council tonight to, to just appoint one and, and leave it with just two.
Run for me. All right, well, unless there's a motion to appoint someone else. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Twenty-one. This is council reports, discussion, and possible action regarding items for upcoming city council agendas. Councilmember Rothschild?
I have none.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah, I have, actually, I have three things. We're counting on Billy Casper Golf to accomplish, to keep an operation on the golf course next year. It's an important part of our financial plan. I would like to ask the council to agendize a, maybe a workshop, maybe it's not a council issue, maybe we have it at a council meeting. I think the public would be interested in it, of just what Casper's plan is to take this operation that's been a million-dollar loss in, in two years' time, and they've done a spectacular job in the time they've been there, but how they're going to get it to a break-even. I'd really like to, and I'm not personally familiar with the count, with the contract with Billy Casper, and so I would hope that discussion would familiarize me and Councilmember Vias with the, with the terms of that contract.
Run okay with that?
Yeah, you never have to ask me. I'm not going to deny anyone a right to agendize. It's always going to be a yes.
Okay, thank you. There, there are two other things. They were both comments that were made by Councilmember Vias at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, that, that I found disturbing, and I'm, I'm concerned that if she's right, we have some serious problems. One of her comments was that we're spending money like there's no tomorrow. To me, that means, I'm not sure what she meant, but I think she meant that we're spending it in a sort of an uncontrolled fashion without any kind of planning or any, any brakes on the way we spend money. I, I don't believe that's how it's done, and I'd like to ask, ask staff to come back to give us a complete discussion of how that spending process occurs. Some of the spending we approve has already happened when we approve drafts. Some things come to us for specific approval. I'd like to know exactly why we get some things and other things we don't get ahead of time, and how that process works, so I can feel some comfort that we're not spending money like it's, like there's no tomorrow. But do you agree with that? And the other comment she made was that city of Victorville is going deeper and deeper and deeper into debt. Again, I, that's not my understanding, but I'd like staff to bring us some kind of a presentation that looks back at our debt over the last four or five years and give us a clear understanding of where we are with that debt, and if it's growing, if we're getting deeper and deeper into debt, I want to know about it. That's all I have, if we can have those three things. I don't care if they're in the next two weeks. I think Casper issue I'd like to deal with quickly, but the other two are, as soon as staff can do it.
One, Vias?
Yes, I'd like to, since we only have three-hundred thousand and we keep spending money on the city attorney, like to get an RFP out there so we see if we can find a legal service, that's a full-service legal service. Since the council's not willing to keep it fair in the community, I'd like to agendize bankruptcy discussions for the next meeting since the Bell auditors stated that we are supposed to be insolvent by now and that Mr. Kennedy recommended them because they're a good firm. So obviously, they must believe their statements, and I'm wondering, what are we doing about that?
Well, Bell auditors never made a statement anywhere that we were to be insolvent by now. They modified their auditor's report to say that due to conditions that exist in the city, they believe those conditions raise substantial doubt about our ability to continue in existence.
It's not in discussion right now, Mr. Kennedy. I'm asking to discuss it at the next meeting. Nobody's willing to talk about the financial state?
I've, as I stated to our auditors, I disagreed with them anyway, so I'm not going to support discussing bankruptcy. We're not bankrupt, we're here, they were wrong.
That's all I have.
I would just like to, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but there was a discussion on that partnership for use of community facilities, and I think it's still ongoing. I want to make sure that we don't lose track of that and we go get a report. If possible, if you're having meetings with these groups, if we can get the times and dates for, for those. And the other item I would like to discuss is, it's, and I mentioned it during the meeting that, you know, I was really concerned when, in the conversation I had this afternoon with Craig, and he said that the, the information that he got that was not in good light for his company came from our closed session. And there was several, several things that he mentioned, and, and that's what he said. I wanted to know, where'd you get the information? He said, I got it from, it came out of your closed session. I got phone calls. I, I would like for the attorney to, well, I would like for this item to be agendized and then for the attorney to provide a report to us on what we can do to prevent this from happening. This can be very serious to the city of Victorville. It can lead to litigation. It puts liability on us, and it really, you know, defies the logic of having these closed sessions. I mean, you know, we have confidentiality, confidentiality. I mean, you know, we have confidentiality loss, and I'm sure that we all want to abide by those, but how can we, how can we go into a closed session knowing that this information will be going on? So I would like to have a real thorough discussion on how we can prevent that, if we can, if we can't.
I agree with that. We had a meeting last, a couple of weeks ago, no, it was last week, where Rothschild went into closed session discussions regarding Metzenfeld's letter. So, yeah, I don't think it's a big, it's rocket science, Rudy. It's right there in open session.
Rothschild, Roth...
Rothschild, Roth... Yeah, no, I think we should discuss it, yeah, because Rothschild was relaying the information in closed session right here in open session.
Fine with having that discussion. I will defer to our city attorney as to where that discussion occurs, though.
You know, the ability to curtail leaks from closed session is a challenge for basically all city attorneys, and I can give you a briefing as to what the options are in open session or in closed session. I'm not sure it needs to be a closed session discussion. I think it can be in open session.
I think that we also need to have a clear understanding exactly what's closed session. And my understanding is there's three things that are in closed session only, and that's personnel, that's litigation, and negotiations. So we need to, we need to decide, you know, what is in closed session, and why do we have so many things in closed session?
The only, I don't even know what you're talking about. The letter I talked about was a public document. Metzenfeld sent this council, not confidential, sent us counsel letter.
It was discussed in closed session.
I made a comment, that came this day. I made it down on the council comments section. It had nothing to do with executive session, anything. It was a letter that was sent to the council. It was a public letter.
In closed session, we discussed it?
It was, no, baloney.
It's recorded. You might have forgot.
All right, so that's items for upcoming city council agendas. I'll go into council member reports. Ms. Vias?
I have nothing.
Cabralis?
Evnen.
Mr. Rothschild?
Evnen.
Kennedy?
Well, I have to, since it's a report, I can just say whatever I want. When auditors want to raise an issue about the long-term viability of an entity, or even the short-term viability, one of the options that's in front of them is to ask the client to do a disclosure, to talk about it. Another option is for the, for the auditors to make a reference to that disclosure in their report, to actually modify the report and say, "These conditions raise substantial doubt." There's no place where any auditor ever predicts that an entity is going to go out of business. What they do do is they say, "The doubt exists for a period of time, 12 months from the date of the financial statements." That 12-month period is where they're expressing their doubt about. "The date of our financial statements was June 30, 2010. Today is July 5, 2011. Their concern extended to June 30, 2011. Folks, we're still here, and we're not going anywhere." I disagree that they even ought to put that in their report. But what they wanted to say to all of us was, "If the city doesn't fix the financial problems we've got, and ultimately, we risk failure. We risk that." So the city and the general fund has taken dramatic steps over the last two years to reduce spending, to cut everything to the bone, to produce balanced budgets in the general fund. That we've been able to do. Basically, every other operation is running at least at a breakeven. Our biggest risk is the property tax problem we have relating to the RDA. But that is not, that is not a city liability. It's an RDA liability. We can have a separate discussion on that issue whenever we want to. That's the meaning of the auditor's modification of that report. They're not predicting anything, and they never said we were going to be insolvent by now. That's my report. Never going to get it on the agenda.
All right, as far as my report, I just wanted to go back to the Victorville Water District and the public hearing on agenda item number 14. The reason I voted no on that, although there were a lot of reduction in fees, there were substantial increases in fees. I'm never going to vote for increases in fees. I have never been supportive of that, and thus, I could not support that item, so that is the reason I voted no on that, and I just wanted to make that clear as to why. With that, we are adjourned.